Excellent, welcome to the special meeting of the Main Street Board of Directors for the City of Adrian and welcome all of you. Thank you. Meredith, you did roll call. Just note that Jacob will be about five minutes late. Devon, he will not be here and neither Tara. So we're just looking for Jerry if that's, that's the case. All right. Then roll call. There's an agenda in front of you. It's rather short, but it'll take a little time. We're gonna do a little workshop or discussion today. So get approval or motion to approve the agenda. Motion is there support? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed the same. All right, Jim, let's sort of lead here for a second, right?
Yeah, so today we're having a visit from Lisa Thompson from National Main Street. Laura and Lee from Michigan Main Street, who I'm sure you've all met. And we're just kind of discussing the, uh, the visit today and what's happening. So you guys want to start the conversation or?
He says anyone's online so they can hear us.
Um, good afternoon. Thank you for having us come. Um, I like to say we're just doing a check-in um, to see how things are going from the board's perspective. And I'm gonna have the team come up here and join me so that you guys can um, get to know Lisa too, um, and Lee, um, from the team. But I am Laura Kozov. I'm the manager of the Michigan Main Street Program at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. I have been with Main Street for 21 years, um, and state government for 26 years, um, doing some type of somethings. Um, so Lisa, you wanna come do a quick introduction?
Hello, I'm Lisa Thompson. I'm a senior program officer at Main Street America. And um, this is my first visit and I'm so excited to be here. Um, my background is in historic preservation. So um, I actually live in Kentucky, so I'm not that far away. I grew up in Ohio. But I managed the National Register of Historic Places for the state of Kentucky before I joined the Main Street Program. And to see your historic buildings and how beautiful and intact they are just really warms my heart. They're, they're all kind of laughing because they keep dragging me through the tour as I keep taking photographs. But um, I also was a small business owner in Washington DC where I lived for about 30 years. And so I really understand the importance between supporting local businesses and to use and activate our historic buildings and you know, just the list of projects that you all are doing is, is really, really impressive. So thank you for having us today.
Hi, I'm Lee Young, Senior Main Street Specialist with Michigan Main Street. My main area with our communities is strategic planning, volunteers, fund development, but then also providing support to our other two specialists. We have Josh Prusak, who's our economic vitality specialist, and Jill Tremonti, our promotion specialist. And I will be back uh, later in October to help uh, with some strategic planning for you. So looking forward to that.
Just so y'all have perspective, I know she said that maybe we all seen it, me and Jase, you know, we see them all the time, but goes all the way back 2018, 19, that Lee came out to our community and we, we made a go of it and first time we're not successful, but she stayed at it with me and uh, the next time around we got in. So uh, that's how far we all go back together. So just know they've been a real big support to us through all this. So, thank you.
So um, I guess just starting out and Lisa can come up here and chime into, um, but I guess over the last, I think you're in your fourth year?
Just entered.
Just entered.
Yeah.
Just entering the fourth year, yeah.
Yep. So over the last four years, looking back, um, with Main Street, tell us about some of the times when the proudest moments that you've had um, as a DDA Main Street program.
Why not? Your leadership comes in, I guess. Proudest moments. I think the day that we were selected, it was one of the big proud moments because of the amount of effort. Michelle over here helped me with it and we worked our butts off to get that done. Um, but then we've, we've developed this board into the team that it is today. Um, there's been almost a turnover twice kind of, kind of thing that has taken place because of just trying to find the right fits and the people that want to be actively hands-on. Another proud thing is, is that a lot of the silos that were out there with the different organizations that were doing things downtown from Art Delicious to a number of them were separated and we were all able to come together and coalesce about a common vision for um, a vibrant downtown. You know, act, you know, actively helping our businesses and all of our downtown residents. And then most recently is just these incredible place making things that we're doing that have come our way. Has just been amazing and it's strengthening us as we get focused. Um, we're still have some some growing pains to do, I think, and it comes to volunteerism and organizing that. I think some of us are still, um, it's a lot of us being active, um, but I think we're, we're continuing to focus on some of the areas that we need to continue to work on. Um, but I would say just watching the groups come together has been one of the proud things that I've been able to see. And the city's great partnership with us. They really, the mayor can state that the commission does appreciate the work we're doing and how we're doing it and Main Street's um, process has been outstanding in the technical sport. I remember when we were trying to answer the questions on the application, what do you think about our technical sport? I didn't really know. I, I look back, I tried, um, but now we know whether it been the branding and the marketing to now he's in the recruiting, a retail recruitment, um, really cool stuff, really great stuff. Anybody else?
Yeah, and I think just how quickly we were able to rebrand based on the support with uh, from Main Street. Uh, going through a rebrand can be kind of an arduous process depending on what kind of industry you're in. And I was surprised that um, how seamless y'all made it for us. And how quickly we were able to roll that out.
And Phil, he was great. The mayor, do it.
I, I already met with them earlier.
Such.
But um, you know, I, I know I said this earlier when I, when I discussed with you, but you know, just what we've seen just downtown when it comes to the volunteers, to that cohesiveness with events like that Dusty was alluding to, but um, also just, you know, the vibrancy with things that we're seeing happening and just the excitement. And I think a big um, piece that was missing before, that is just the fact that we do have that Main Street Director so that there is somebody that the businesses that want to come in or that are already existing now know who they can talk to. Because that was always a piece that was definitely missing and they always felt like islands out there and not knowing what to do and they, they were trying to talk to each other, but it was, it was a very difficult task for them to get through, you know, starting a business or even just trying anything they were trying to do at their business. And now, you know, they do have you know, that Main Street Director to go to and, and they also feel very comfortable with, you know, coming to the DDA and they know the DDA members and the DDA um, is just so much more active and out there and they know who the, those numbers are. And so they I, I just feel that the businesses feel more supported in general, um, all the way around because of it.
Yeah, having, I mean, that's why having a, um, at your population size, having a full-time Main Street Director um, is really a baseline requirement to be in a nationally accredited Main Street Program. Because it really is the difference between, you know, having somebody who's there, who's listening to the businesses, your property owners every day, um, and are not. Yeah.
I'll add, I think in the last year to 18 months, um, two things. I think our social media has improved dramatically and part of that is the branding and part of that is the people that uh, volunteer to create those posts. And the other thing I think um, personally is we, we were we start over. The promotions committee was able to pull off a new event this year on 517 day and it was well attended and made the Toledo news and uh, was just kind of a good new event for us, so.
That's excellent. Excellent.
I think with the social media, the storytelling is so powerful. Uh, getting the personal story, the, the why behind our uh, businesses and organizations. It makes you feel that much more part of their story.
Yeah, I think we really found that out during COVID. You know, we, you know, Main Street has been talking about local and why, you know, downtown, small businesses are so important. But it, I think we all had to go through COVID to really sort of come together and realize how important those local businesses are. And so that storytelling, personalize it, I mean, even personalizing your own stories, like why, why are you involved in this? And why is Main Street important to you personally? Because each one of you are gonna have a different answer. But storytelling is gonna help you build more volunteerism, more um, support financially for the program. So yeah, it's, it's a huge piece. Yeah.
So we just wanted to be, uh, we always wanted to be, I think a lot of people always wanted us to realize that we have a university and a college in this town. And um, Michael's with the Sanhite University and we have Riley who represents Adrian College, but uh, we're starting to look into an idea of being a knowledge town. We've, we've connected with um, a few people. They haven't seen it yet. I've been working on it sort of in the background. Um, but we really are trying to find a way to bring those college students downtown. And when you see the, the Park Place Project where it was former Hammermans, um, they're gonna activate that space in the, in the downstairs and they're gonna use the upstairs more like dormitory type work. And then we were talking to Sienna, we're trying to get downtown too as well. So they're trying to get the kids down here. Um, and there's a lot of cool things that are starting to pop as far as activities for um, age groups like seventeen to twenty. And that's where we were, like I said, in one of our discussions one day, one of the students that was here said, what do I have? You know, you guys got a lot of bars and restaurants, but what do we get to do? And so we're missing a little component there, but I think we're starting to visualize and trying to many of our projects going forward are gonna have sort of a theme in, in it that way.
That's excellent. That's great. Cause you know, the goal is to really figure out how to retain those students that love this place, you know, for four years. How do you keep them here forever? Um, and so yeah, Jay was telling us some really great ideas about some of the programs that you are working on that I think are, are, are really almost models for hopefully something that we can share throughout our network for other communities that have colleges.
Yeah.
Yeah. So um, Jay was saying it's like $50 million worth of investment that's happening in your downtown core over the next three to five years. Like how, what is, what is all of that? What, like, what's the vision for like what it's all gonna do for your downtown? Like, well, how do you see this like draft? I mean, it's gonna change your downtown a lot.
It will. The, the biggest project we have going is the Riverfront Project, which is gonna be, you know, 30 million before it's over. And it's revealing the river from Maple to Mami and um, and we'll be clearing land, creating a city park along. We're hoping that the developers will come in and put housing, which we think is since it's a high priority of, of state government, I think we're gonna be um, successful in that endeavor. Um, but that will be a huge, and we have a winter streetscape where we're putting in a separate bike lane with its own curb. So you're gonna see that really changes. We capture that street again. It used to be a trunk line. It's not anymore. So we're gonna capture and slow it down. Jay's talking about speed bumps downtown, big ones. Just slow the traffic down. And then you're just watching the uh, the amount of passion dollars that are in. There's two types. There's passion dollars and then there's um, there's a guy that manages a real estate portfolio for a wealthy family and he keeps buying buildings and repurposed, you know, by building housing and then challenging us to find retail, uh, innovative type things to put in the, on the floor. So we're in a very lucky spot, I think, because these people have shown up. But I've always said that investors are swift. Once they see the opportunity, they move quickly. And so it's starting to snowball. We got a lot of momentum going on. So, so and I, I just think, you know, every time he buys a building, he has to put four or five million into it. Hammermans is 12 and a half million. Um, you think about Chandler's was five and a half million when it was put in, but there's a lot of them. We're starting to see the architectural drawings and everything as they're coming in. So um, that's what he's trying to do is sort of monetize what's happening over the next three to five years.
That's excellent. And um, we kind of asked this question of the city manager, but it'd be interesting to know what you all, what your answer is. Since you've got so many different things that are on, on your plate, what, what's the one project that isn't on your plate that you really want to get?
Well, I wanted that playground, but I guess it's on the plate now.
Your playground?
Yes.
Yeah.
I've never mentioned that over.
Put the playground back here, hopefully be back here. So that'd be, that'd be neat, but um, that was a one.
I mean, it could be, it could be a merchant. It could be a business. It could be a building.
I want a bicycle shop.
A bicycle shop. Okay.
And a wine bar.
And a brunch place.
Yes.
Yeah, we really need something, e- even like a brunch place that stays open. You know, like maybe it's something that is staying open, serving breakfast or late night food very late for anybody that is frequenting any of the establishments downtown. Cause that is something I've heard as well. When people are leaving, they're like, well, now we have to drive to Taco Bell or go somewhere like that because there's nothing to get for food. And there used to be a while back, you, you could.
Yeah.
So hopefully we can bring that back too.
Or it might be one of the food trucks.
Right.
Right. That, you know, has a late night option, you know?
Cause I know even people like that leave the Croweswell, like a show and those shows don't get out real early and in they might be able to grab a drink, but then if they want to like, now I'm hungry and it's too late. So that, that as well.
If you look at like downtown Chelsea, you'll see all these high, not real high-end, but really quality restaurants. They just put another one in. And there's another one. I mean, they just keep adding this big menu of choices in their downtown, which that's what I would love to see us evolve into. What COVID did to the minds of the ri- the restaurant owners and was extraordinary because it squeezed them and they lost a lot. And so watching them come back and try to expand themselves, they're still at that halfway, some of them are still at the halfway point. They're still cautious. Um, but recruiting men to this town, um, I think that's one thing I'd like to see is a lot more variety. You know, the Crosswell patrons really need some, some variety. They really do. There's a lot of people coming into the Crosswell from many other states coming to visit and we don't capture them. We don't capture their, their other dollars.
Are there any kind of like incentives that as a, as a board that you can offer like restaurateurs that are maybe targeted to the types of restaurants that you're looking for?
I mean, there's absolutely, you know, we can, we have the ability to create a program to do that, you know, and, and we're we get our impact report that'll be coming out soon. That'll let us know what the community wants and, and what those needs are. And if we want to be very aggressive, we can, we can follow that and provide those incentives to do that. We're working on a, you know, we talked briefly about working on the facade grant. Well, also there's a revolving loan fund that'll be part of that as well. So there's an opportunity for them to get some additional dollars with, with that program.
I think some of it too. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say that brewery.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think some of it too, looking ahead, like what does it look like in like five years? And I think it is seeing people walking downtown, especially like on the weekends. Um, you can tell when there is a Croweswell matinee because there are a lot of people walking downtown or milling around, but a lot of times other than that, you don't see it that often on a Saturday, even on a Saturday, which would be like a big shopping day. I mean, sometimes you do, sometimes you don't, but especially Sundays. But you can tell when there's a Croweswell show because you do see a lot of people walking around, but it'd be great if we could, you know, same idea, capture those same people like, hey, they're shopping open or there's, you know, there's food options or there's other things for them to do when they leave the Croweswell or as they're going in. Um, but i- it's, I don't want to say it's a ghost town, but it is very desolate on Sundays when it's not a Croweswell matinee. I've noticed that.
Right. Is there like an effort to when there, when there is something at the Croweswell on a Sunday? Is there something that goes out to the restaurants and the merchants sort of that says, oh, this is what our programming is for the next quarter. We encourage you to be open or do you incentivize them to be open, those kind of things? Yeah.
Yeah. So we do talk with the local restaurants with the, you know, share our programming. I'm, so I work at the Croweswell. But it's, there, there isn't a lot beyond with some great coffee shops, but you know, things that are open really for a meal before our shows and after our shows on Sundays is really a challenge.
Yeah. Yeah. But it might be interesting to, I mean, I sort of think about it when I was a Main Street Director in Paducah, Kentucky. So we had the paddle wheel, the paddle boats would come in. And our Main Street Program would work with our Visitors Bureau and we would basically survey our businesses to say, okay, the boat's coming in, this is the time they're gonna be in the dock. Who's gonna be open? What specials are you gonna have? What, you know, what, what can these visitors do?
Yeah.
And then we would print out a map and a guide and it was very readily available to everybody that when they got off the boat. And so you sort of have to take that same kind of idea and use it except for the theater. So if the, if the board here could help organize that list and it doesn't have to be a paper thing. It could just be a list of these are the businesses that are gonna be open and that when they do marketing to their patrons who have bought tickets, they can sort of say, oh, these are the places where we'd be open or we could go have lunch beforehand or, or.
Yeah, it's amazing. So we email on Thursday or Friday, kind of depends a little bit. Um, everyone who has a ticket for the coming weekend and in that like not frequently, but sometimes that coincides with a street closure. They pay attention and come early. So they are reading that email. We know that they're paying attention to the communications we send. So it would be really fascinating to, I mean, they came to Art Delicious for sure. Our patrons were out there doing that before and after the show.
Yeah.
Um, but just on a typical day, what that could look like.
Yeah, it might be worth a try, you know?
We got a new restaurant coming. Sunday stew.
Yay.
That's excellent. Good. Good. How um, how engaged are you all? Like, other than just coming to a board meeting? Are you on a committee? Are you on a team that's working on a project?
I would say that our promotion committee is pretty strong. You know, it gets a lot of attention. Um, and one of the things we want to do with Lee is when I heard the, what Gross Point was doing on our little chairman's call or chairperson call, I was, I was, I thought that's exactly what maybe is hindering us a bit is we're trying to fit ourselves into the, the four areas. And some of those areas are not pertinent yet because we're, we're starting to build and meet those places. So our, you know, our design committee's starting to emerge. Um, um, but you know, I like to call them different names and I'd like to line up in a different fashion where we all have our great interest, where we each think we're the strongest in, in suits and start reflecting those committees in a different way. So uh, so I think we're in the middle of that growing process. Um, we don't, you know, we talked about um, having an, the action plan with the steps and all that. And um, we have something going now so that we can sort of focus on that, but we weren't that way before. We really weren't just saying, okay, here's a plan. Let's everybody focus on this one thing. But those are coming to us at the moment now.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, the only, only feedback I would give about using like different words for committees or, you know, project, like the four points is that one of the things that's, that's so great about the Main Street Network is that, you know, when you read any materials that we publish, it's always gonna be described in those four words. Main Street, Michigan Main Street is also gonna use those four words. And so as you're teaching the community about what it is Main Street does and they might just stumble on our website or into something. If, if we don't always use the same language, then sometimes people lose that they're really part of something bigger.
Yeah, I think we'd almost be internal with that, like our own little thing. I don't think we'd promote that. That's just so we get focused on great things.
Yeah, cause the, the beauty of this is that you really are a part of a state network. You're part of a national network. And it, it does mean something when you go to ask for volunteers or fundraising and things like that. So that would just be mine only. But how you organize yourself is really about just making sure you get the work done and that you're balanced across all four points. Yeah.
Yeah, we've taken some real time with McKenna as we were rebuilding our TIF, but we had them take a dual role with us to run a strategic planning uh, modules with us. We really are coming to the end of, or towards the end of that process, which is a great handoff to you. Um, it's gonna be something that we can streamline into and then sort of see if we structure uh, things in the right way. Just hearing what it is we are working on and saying, hey, this, maybe this committee fits better with that.
That's great. Anything else?
Um, just wanted to ask around um, some of the services that you've received over the last couple of years from us. Um, any thoughts on that? Those services, um, any services you'd like to see that we haven't provided? I know Jay's been working hard on visitor data and you guys were kind of first out front before we jumped on with National to do that. Um, but we're definitely building some templates and things around the visitor data that we were putting out there. Um, you know, the impact report, market snapshots coming up um, this late winter, early spring.
We've been impressed with all the technical assistance. I will say that your upgrades on your website and things that are happening right now is outstanding. Um, it's a lot more resourceful, I think, a lot more user-friendly. I think it's got more uh, content and uh, more ideas on how to do things. So that's brand new to us at the moment. So we're just seeing it. Um, starting to engage it.
That's good.
I'm, I'm pleased.
Yeah, no, I, I was just talking to Lee as we were doing the tour downtown, but I think the next step in our process, right? We did the branding. Now we're doing the business. We're finishing up the business recruitment and, and really that next thing for us in particular is that entrepreneurial ecosystem. It's building those grassroots businesses, helping them grow and educate them, getting them into that system. And with the, the project at the town square and our relationship with Launch Lona Way, it really makes sense for us that to be the next step. And so I think that's probably what will, that'll be lobbying for us to use um, and uh, you know, at the, at the next round.
Great.
Do you have any questions, Lee?
Do you all have any questions for us?
No, I keep in touch with you guys pretty well.
I know you've been on our chair, vice chair meetings.
It's your first time visiting our community, Lisa. We've, we've talked before and done some virtual stuff. If you could pinpoint one or two areas that you think that we've missed or that's a great opportunity for us, what do you think that you would find? You know, cause we see it every day and it's tough for us to really step back and say, wow, that's been in front of us the entire time and we didn't see it.
Yeah, I think what I'm, the first thing I'm most impressed about, and I sort of alluded to this, is your building stock. Um, now, the building stock needs some love and care, right? Or you're gonna lose more buildings. Um, that may or may not have been a good thing because now you've got a beautiful town square and the plan that's coming, I just really, I think it's, it's brilliant. Um, I love the, um, I love the fact that your downtown is, is actually a very large footprint. A lot of times our main streets are very lateral, so they're really long, not very walkable. This is a very walkable sort of dense, compact historic district. You've got great potential in the alleyways that are connecting your rear parking to the, you know, the fronts of the buildings. Um, I even saw some really creative sort of rear entrances. Um, so I think that is something that you can really leverage again, just to sort of help circulation. So it might be pedestrian wayfinding that you're gonna need. Because how, you know, I'm new and I'm sort of like trying to orient myself, you know, so how, how would I go through the alleys to get to where I need to go? So think about that. Um, yeah, and I'm, I'm really intrigued by the, the creek, the river. Remember, I'm from Kentucky. Um, I'm really intrigued by that. Um, because I really think there's a lot of really good development opportunities. Um, but also again, adding more public space that could be utilized to help, you know, create more walkability, like the mayor was saying. Um, so I, and I just, I love the, the innovation and the, the way you've been able to, to really leverage the amount of public, private investment that's happening. Um, so applause to you all. Yeah, it's, it's just really incredible. But that's my immediate kind of feedback.
I will say our city is working hand in hand or, or commission and like to um, handle some of the uh, demolition by their, whatever that's saying, everybody says they're like.
Demolition by neglect.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so they're, they're addressing a hard issue right now currently. That we're all trying to, to get our arms around too, because we don't want to see that either.
No.
We do have a very large footprint because the city was much bigger in history.
Yeah, how about all the banks that I said, yeah.
So there's this, there's this current out there from some opinions that it needs to be smaller and some of it needs to be condensed. That's a direct violation of the MEDC handbook. That's a direct violation of the M E D C handbook.
Well, now that, I mean, you think about the housing problem, you know, the situation that we're all, all across the country, I see this. And you've got this cute, really large footprint. That you could add, what, five hundred houses, housing units, I think you told me. I mean, how far would that go to help solve this part of Michigan's housing problem? But it's in a walkable, compact, more sustainable sort of way.
That's why I said I'm glad the developer that's coming in is is oriented in new units, new housing units and the like. They're buying them in small cities throughout Michigan, by the way, and so they know there's a sprawl going on. And so we want to create an environment where people would like to live, because they can work from their place, so that's, that is in our, in our vision.
Yeah, well, the infrastructure is here, right? So you might as well utilize where the infrastructure is to create that environment that you you're wanting. That vision.
Yeah. I love it.
Uh, tougher follow-up question from Jay's question of what do you like the most? Uh, what was the most off-putting or something you think like you wouldn't want to see when you visited first time here, what's something we should address from your perspective?
Um, so the facade program that you're establishing, um, I would look at some of your upper story windows. Because there's been a lot of sort of replacements that have happened that are inappropriate sizes. Um, and it's just amazing when you put in. A a good window into a historic building, how it will totally change the streetscape.
Great, thank you.
I think the facade program is going to be key. Um, and really helping fix some of those buildings up downtown that need help.
An interesting front and back, so if you get in our back parking lot, you're gonna see that looks, that looks worse than the front, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, because they can both be entrances, right, into those businesses, so, yeah, you gotta pay attention to both. Especially with your footprint and where people are parking and. Um, things like that, it's important to have that. That first welcoming, you know, you roll out the the welcome mat, you want them to see. How pretty those buildings are.
Mm-hmm, yep, and the flowers are beautiful, so I'm glad I got to still see those, because. We were in Blissfield and they were, they were saying that they had just removed all the beautiful flowers, so.
That was an initiative that came from a a. Restaurant owner that actually evolved and then she sort of released it and Jerry took a heavy role on that. And then again, I have to thank the city, because they stepped up and said, well, we'll go with this, it's beautiful and it's working great, so. They're great partners.
Yeah.
I have one question, sorry, just.
Go ahead.
So how are the youth involved with your program?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's really it, you know, we've uh. I have the unique connection, right, you know, being on the school board and having my daughters and they bring friends and. They're involved with different leadership groups throughout the, throughout the school, and so they bring those leadership groups in and and really help. Um, you know, the superintendent is. Actually texted me during this meeting, but um, I have that connection, so I can, I can get to the high school, I can get those kids with the middle school kids and get them involved. Um, we share our surveys with them, so when we, when we ask questions, we make sure that because of my unique relationship, I can get that. To the appropriate people to get their input and their feedback that way, so we, we value their opinion. We value what they're, what they're able to do and help, help us with, so that's really how we approach it.
They're required a certain number of volunteer hours, um, so we're able to capitalize on that as well.
Have you ever thought of having one sit on the board? As an ex officio?
So we have, um, at the college level, we have that, we haven't discussed it at the, at the high school level, we haven't discussed that, I think that could be an interesting opportunity.
Um, we were just in Blissfield and in Charlevoi, they had a junior. Um, Main Street representative on their program. And that, their representative had to do a project within their downtown, and so they had to raise the money. They had to come up with the plan, they had to get approvals for whatever that project may have but needed, you know, to be done. And then they would execute that project, um, and so it's just a great way to. Get something else accomplished downtown that they have a passion for, um, but then to get others involved, so it may just be something you want to. Think of, you know, down the way, I mean, it could even be at the college level, right, like. Um, or all three, have all three um, be partners in it, um. But just a way to bring. Um, I think when we were in Blissfield, um, Lisa was talking about de- depending on your demographics. You know, we're really good at capturing the middle group of folks and getting their feedback. Um, but the younger generation and the older generation, not so much, and so how can we make sure that our downtown is for everyone? All I got.
Yeah. And thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
And we're here anytime you need us. You know how to get ahold of us.
You got it. I see you got some swag.
Yes, we did.
Oh, that's true. He just, he'd need this, he just did a uh. Shameful uh, plug for his own business.
I was just showing the opportunities of having a grocery in the downtown.
That's a good thing he has Gwen, his wife. Thank you. All right, I don't see any other public, we'll open it for public comment, just to stay with our order. I don't believe there is, so we'll move on, I don't have any further chair comments, thank you all for being here today, I really appreciate it, it's a special meeting and I'm glad you're here. Any other board member comments? All right, I get back, back to work.
Thank you.